We will call the regular school board meeting for the Stevens Point area public school district for Monday, August 12th to order. And I would ask Heidi to do a roll call and verification of quorum.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Daly has resigned. Ms. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Fang?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Ranow is excused. Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Wade?
Present.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item three is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pen came to attack you.
Item five, public comments. No one has signed up for this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment in front of the board? No one is present. If I could beg the indulgence of the board, we'll go through presentations, but we do have an item towards the end of the agenda that is the Pacelli seventh and eighth football participation. And with the board's approval, I'd like to pull that up at the beginning of the business meeting so that we can take care of that since one of the members of our school community is here to help provide information on that.
That's item thirteen F.
Right. Are people comfortable with that?
Do you want a motion to move that from thirteen F?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, I will also move, to move thirteen F up to section-
After the consent agenda.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we will move into presentations. Item A is our communication report. Sarah O'Donnell.
It's like back to school time already. Can you read that?
I know. So, the first thing I wanted to talk about tonight, if you were at the Educational Services Committee meeting, Brian Casey, our Director of Technology, gave a report out on his annual report for the last five years of their district tech assessment survey. That survey is given to staff and students and really meant to judge if what they are doing is effectively moving that needle for curriculum delivery relative to technology in the classroom. And while that may have seemed incremental over those five years, when I look at it as a whole, they've really made some significant growth there. Brian could certainly do a much better job elaborating on that than I. So, if you have questions about that or wanted to see the entire presentation, I'm sure he would be happy to provide that information to you. Relative to back-to-school communication, if you've got students in secondary schools, you've likely already received kind of those packets and registration information. Elementary information is also coming out. Many schools are already kind of, I won't say deeply into, but pretty deeply into their back-to-school communication plans. At a district level, we've combined all of that information into one section of the website, so folks can go to pointschools.net backslash backtoschool and kind of jump off from there if they're looking for a place to start or can't find something specific. We've got school supplies on there, new student registration information, transportation, how they can find their bus routes, that sort of information, and then new student orientation information for secondary students as well. We'll begin at a district level, sharing that out kind of more targeted. So, we've got like elementary information is all fairly similar, so parents will start to receive kind of those bulk emails, bulk text messages, just kind of reminding them in case they don't know that their summer is slipping away quickly, which I think we all do. If folks have trouble finding any of that or accessing any of that, they're always welcome to call Bliss. We'd be more than happy to help get them pointed in the right direction. In your communication dashboard for July, our media coverage included coverage on approved bids for referendum projects as well as school surveillance system upgrades. We also saw some pieces on the food service, summer meal program, which is a really great program. We feed all students under the age of eighteen for free for breakfast and lunch at all sites, whether or not they're enrolled in summer school. That received a gold award from the USDA for a second year in a row. So, really happy to see, A, them receive that, and B, get some good coverage for the district. We also saw an article on Mr. Hoppy receiving the Wisconsin Teacher of the Year Award. Very exciting. And then last week, we've been working with Stevens Point Journal. We should see a piece come out tomorrow, maybe Wednesday. He did a really nice job covering all of our construction efforts relative to referendum projects, so we'll see a really nice update for that. The last thing I wanted to add on the dashboard, I did add the, under new media, traditionally we've seen Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. I've popped YouTube off of there and replaced it with our mobile app. So, downloads you see there were to date through July 31st. One of the things I'd like to focus on this year is making sure that we increase the amount of downloads we see for that app and then make sure that we're pushing information there that folks can get. It's really nice, kind of one-stop shop for parents and students, and I think we could do a better job kind of communicating about that and improving the content there. So, I added it just as we'll kind of get some baseline data over the next few months, and then we'll hopefully ramp that up a little bit for you as well. And then finally, our phone system will be cut over this week, Wednesday, August 14th. We are expecting some intermittent service delays or interruptions on that day specifically between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. So, we've notified staff, we've got some stuff on the website, we'll put a little kind of emergency alert out there, too. Again, we don't think it'll be anything major, but certainly want folks to know if they're trying to call us between that 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock, there's a good chance they're not getting through, so. And kudos to Brian and his team, that's a huge project that they've been working on, so. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The 716 downloads, is that 716 downloads in the month of-
To date. To date. So, like-
Only 716 people are using?
716 people have downloaded it, and then from there, we've seen the 505-
505, yeah.
Page views. Now, for July, right, like that's probably low because parents likely aren't looking for the same type of information in July that they are in an August or even in October. So, I think part of our task will be to track that as we see kind of, like, website's pretty predictable in terms of views, so I want to see, does that mirror what we would expect to see for website views on our mobile app? And then if we push different types of content at different times, does that help, right? Do we see views come up or come down? And then are there some efforts we can make at a school level, at a district level, to communicate what type of information is available on that mobile app to see those downloads increase?
Yeah, so 716 people total.
Mm-hmm.
That, we have 7,400 students.
We do. Yep, yep. So, I would expect to see it higher, right? You would expect to see it be higher.
Yeah.
So, I think that's why it's on there, right? It's a really great tool. I think we just need to do some better education about-
Yeah.
Why they should, right, because there's an app for everything, right? So, why is this one that should deserve some attention?
Yeah, I forgot, I want to pull out my phone and say okay to the camera, get your app. It's really good.
Could we do something back-to-school minutes?
Yeah.
I mean, if we could have something that would be, yeah.
I've got, schools have received kind of that basic stuff, please push this, and then we've got some signage that we'll put out as well. And I think part of that education is, certainly part of that district education, too, right? We've pushed to parents, I don't know that we've pushed specifically to staff. So, I think certainly making our staff aware that that exists. And then how does content migrate there? Like, I know how content migrates there, but I don't know that our schools necessarily understand how content migrates there. So, like for information that I'm pushing, it's a great place to get that at a school level. We have some opportunities for growth there.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Sarah?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, superintendent's report.
Well, summer school is almost closed up. We have a number of students that engaged in many great programs, almost 3,000 students, 2,921 students altogether. We do have a couple courses that are still in progress. We have a mindfulness camp that still is running through August 19th with 45 students. We have AP prep camps with 15 students, and of course, our music programs, including band with 23 students and strings, 52 students. So, we'd have a very successful summer school program this year. Congratulations to Lori Epstein and our food service program. They were recognized with a Golden Turnip, the Beat Award from the USDA. It's a national recognition for outstanding summer school meal program, so thank you to our food service program. There's an opening in Region Five with the WASB. If any of you are interested in joining the WASB board, applications are due September 9th, and that's an online application. I know that's been brought up at this meeting in the past in terms of whether or not we want recognition on a larger stage. And again, Amy Daly has resigned her position. Amy was a board member. She was also the board secretary for a period of time. She served on the, as our treasurer, as well as chairperson of the Business Services Committee, which is now Business Services and HR. So, thanks to Amy for her dedication to our school district. That's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions of Craig?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into item seven, which is our consent agenda. That includes the minutes of July 15th, 2019, school board meeting, the approval of the schedule of monthly bills, and employment recommendations. And all of you should have the up-to-date list of employment recommendations in front of you this evening. So, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, move.
Any discussion or questions? I will have Heidi call the roll because of the bills.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Fang?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranow is excused. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will be moving then item thirteen F, which is the Pacelli seventh and eighth football participation up, and Dave Hauser's here to provide us with some information.
Thanks for moving me up. I can still get my late tea time in now for sure. July 22nd, John Rafflick from the Pacelli area Catholic school system had emailed me and Dan Gonyar, our other athletic director, if we would have considered having their kids join our programs at PJ Jacobs in football. They had eight, let me back that, they had 10 to 12, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders sign up for their team, which isn't enough for them. We have traditionally had some low numbers in seventh and eighth grade. Our numbers last year in seventh grade were 13. We played with a small squad last year, which isn't ideal for a lot of healthy reasons. Our eighth grade squad last year had 19 boys. This year, with the potential of them joining us, puts our seventh grade numbers right around the 20 to 22 number, and our eighth grade numbers right around the 22 to 25. We won't be able to accept their sixth graders because we don't have them at our junior high program. The agreement has to start, though, with Pacelli becoming a WI member at the middle level, which they've done that, they've met that requirement. Co-ops at the seventh and eighth grade level work a little bit different. It's a verbal agreement from their board, it's a verbal agreement from our board, and then John and I work out logistics of how that's going to work. And what I've come up with for John is become the WI member, which he's done, they'll adhere to our athletic code, so they'll have to agree to our athletic code, and the majority of their parents were at our code meeting the other night, and then they would pay all fees for sports that established by our school board at the seventh and eighth grade level. So, I'm here tonight to have, you know, ask any questions that you may have, but more or less looking for the consent of the board to move ahead with this cooperative agreement.
And just for clarification, this is for this upcoming school year?
2019 seventh and eighth grade football season.
Okay.
I will move to approve the Pacelli student participation agreement in seventh and eighth football program at PJ Jacobs.
Yeah, I'll second that, and I do agree with the numbers. The lower those numbers get, the playtime for the kids can put them, I don't want to say at risk, but it's nice to have a larger number if someone should get hurt. And I think the two, the two school districts work really well together, so I appreciate your, you know, doing this. I think it's a great idea.
It's good for kids. It's, you know, it's good for both, both school districts or-
I agree.
You know our principal very well, Mr. Dobrotz.
Yes.
He's for our kids, and this allows us to keep our program and play our schedule versus trying to figure out how to combine maybe with Ben Franklin at those levels.
Sure.
So, it allows our kids to keep our teams as well.
It's safer, and quite frankly, when you have numbers that low, you're an injury or two away from canceling your season, mid-season.
For sure.
If I can add on that-
You might, you might have to schedule or cancel a game.
We played modified games last year in seventh grade, so we had to shorten our quarters or play a half sometimes depending on where our squad was that week, so.
When would they start, excuse me, when would they start practice?
We start practice August 19th.
Okay, so they'd be ready to join us?
Yeah, I will obviously be, you know, working with John tomorrow and letting him know that was approved.
Okay.
And like I said, his parents came, so they've gotten team expectations from the coaches and where to go for practice and those types of things. We did that preliminary just because we had our code meeting prior to the board meeting.
Sure, that's great.
How many games do they play in a typical season?
Seventh grade is six, eighth grade is six.
Any other questions? We have motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Dave.
Moving into item eight, Business Services, Business Services Human Resources Committee I'm going to turn this over to Mike and Jeff. Can you guys kind of update the committee as to the meeting?
Mike and Jeff.
I'd have to remember what happened, and I wasn't there. Go ahead, Mike. You're much younger than I am.
I'll do the first one, I remember that. The first one has to do with the masonry bid for Spash, and there were three bids. Obviously, the low bidder is Bolt Construction, which really didn't surprise Tom in that Bolt Construction won the majority of the bids at Spash earlier, so they obviously wanted that particular contract and were more competitive. So, I think that's all we talked about with Bolt. So, I'll move to approve the Bolt Construction masonry bid of 7,078-
778,000.
778,248.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. One of you want to do the revision of the 2018-2019 budget?
Well, as far as I can recall, anyway, the budget's finalized after the fact because you just, you never know what's going to come in and what's going to go out. There were a few adjustments that they made, I think for a total of something like 72,000 in that neighborhood, but that was, those were the final numbers from the year, so.
That's the revised budget?
So, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I can, let's see if I get back to my, sure, move, approve the revised 2018-2019 budget, full board for approval. Well, that is, actually, this is the full board, so. Move to approve the updated revised 2018-2019 budget.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Moving on to item nine, Human Resources. And again, that was at the Business Services Human Resources Committee meeting. Do, what do you want to take that one?
I think that the basic idea with this is, in the employee handbook, Policy 5.05 has been revised because of the changes to the Compensation Administration Plan. So, if you look at the attachment, that is the draft, and the committee reviewed it, and they didn't see a problem with it. And so, I would move to approve Employee Handbook Policy 5.05, employee compensation as is presented.
Second.
Any discussion or questions with respect to that? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 10, Educational Services. I'm going to turn that over to Barb.
We did have five items on the agenda last week. As Sarah mentioned, Brian had given a presentation on their technology efforts, and Caleb gave us an update on seclusion and restraint report. And then our next one is the Resolution Regarding Expulsions and Use of the Independent Hearing Officer. This is just, in case of an expulsion, in the last year, we used the independent hearing officer, and the motion was-
Barb, we're going to put that on hold tonight.
Oh, we are.
Yep. We have, we had agreed to use an independent hearing officer two years ago.
Yeah.
And we have, and it's been very successful. I have been unable to contact our counsel, Shayna Lewis, to get feedback on, from her in terms of recommendations regarding who we're going to use. So, I'll bring that back in September.
Okay. Well, that was quick.
Yeah.
The next item, the Reading Recovery Consortium, I think that's just kind of a annual thing that we are involved in, and we need approval to participate in the North Central Wisconsin Reading Recovery Consortium. So, I would move that we approve that participation in the North Central Wisconsin Reading Recovery Consortium.
I'll second that. Any discussions or questions with respect to that? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries.
And our last item is the e-learning program, and I think I'd like Connie to talk about that because I'm sure she'd do a way better job than I would of that.
Good evening, everyone. So, the e-learning program or project is something that we've been taking a look at as an option to provide instruction when we have school cancellations for inclement weather. The DPI has now encouraged school districts to be innovative in using virtual learning time or e-learning time to provide instruction for students in their realm, not only for inclement weather days, but if students have professional development days, if there's widespread sickness or other emergencies where school might be canceled. They are encouraging districts to use this as an option, probably in lieu of the winter that we had, because so many school districts like us have had to, when we had nine school cancellations, that resulted in adding on to the school calendar and changing the school calendar, as you know, many times I was in front of you. We lost our two professional development days, but most importantly, there was quite the disruption for instruction. So, actually, in our school district, we had some teachers that were doing this even prior to my being here to talk to you about it tonight, specifically in AP courses. So many of our AP instructors, when we had particularly four days off, with the AP curriculum is very structured, and they were worried about students missing out on instruction. So, some individual teachers had kids doing some things because we have the means to do that. DPI, which I've outlined in the memo, gave districts five planning considerations as they look at this as an option for instruction during school cancellation days. And what that means is, take a look at these five conditions, and how does your district rate in preparing and/or being prepared for this, to provide this instruction, this kind of instruction? We couldn't even be considering this if we didn't have the strong technology program that we have in place in this district. So, as I looked at these five considerations, we rated very high in terms of our being prepared and our students and staff being prepared to provide this. So, in short, this would be something that would happen at the secondary level. With the increase of the 20 minutes at the elementary level, we far exceed the DPI mandates. At the secondary level, because we are a one-to-one device, the first of their considerations is, do you have internet and device access? All of our students do have, from in grades seven through 12, have their own device. And in addition, any families or students who might have internet connection problems, we provide them with tools to get those. So, we do have access for our students, not only internet-wise, but certainly every student having their own device. So, in that first planning consideration, we're doing quite well. We've been a one-to-one for a very, very long time, 912, through our Sentry Technology Grant, and now with Brian's, Brian's staff has put in now the Chromebooks for our seventh and eighth graders. The second was, do students have an online platform that is used consistently and regularly? And we've been using Schoology as an online platform for a very long time. If you walk into many secondary classrooms, you will see Schoology, as kids see Schoology, they use Schoology, they get activities off of Schoology, they submit assignments, and they're very familiar with that platform as our teachers are as well. Ensure staff is, the third consideration, is directly reachable by students and caregivers to facilitate and support instruction. It's really important in the considerations that DPI said, that this needs to be something that allows instruction to continue even when the students aren't there. So, our students have access, our staff is very well-prepared, we provide a lot of professional development. In fact, Brian's department does an incredible job, and we actually have technology integration specialists at, that are assigned to the secondary buildings that can provide support to teachers as we move, if we move this project forward. Communication of Expectations of Learning, which is what our department will, with technology, will work very, very strongly. The most important part of this is communication to our families that no longer will, when we have school canceled for inclement weather or other emergencies, kids will still be participating in learning, and that will be done virtually. We will need to communicate that to our staff, certainly, but most importantly, to our kids and our families. We have a really great device right now with, every Wednesday, we are doing academic and career planning with grades seven through 12, so it's a perfect time for us to prepare our students, inform our students, practice with our students, and then certainly provide parents with more than enough communication on why we're doing that. And then finally, the work continuity, that our role and our expectations will have protocols for teachers that this is not busy work, this is authentic instruction, that students can participate in virtually, that, to keep seamless instruction going even when weather, when school is canceled. Again, this would be a secondary project. We're asking you to approve us moving forward as this for an option. It would mean that we, you wouldn't see me to revise a calendar anymore because if we're doing e-learning, our calendar that is set for 1920 would not change. We wouldn't be adding days on to the end of the school year, we wouldn't be adding on minutes to Spash to meet the mandates from DPI, unless, of course, it got to a time where we had potentially a year like we did this year and said, we really want some additional time for those elementary students. Right now, it's not an elementary project. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the board would always have the option, the superintendent would have the option to say, this is an e-learning day. If we would get to a point where we say, no, we're, this is just too many now, and we need to have our elementary students in, we simply could do and bring and add on days to the calendar if the board, the superintendent chooses to do that.
I will move to approve an e-learning program to be utilized on days when school is canceled for inclement weather or other emergencies.
Second. So, Connie, Connie, so what you're saying is, if we do implement this, if it's approved and we implement this, that this would qualify for what the state's requiring in the number of days, unless it should get to a point where, you know, there's so many that we're concerned about elementary and that, but otherwise, we're covered.
These count as instructional minutes.
Okay, that's great.
And DPI is supporting it and encouraging it.
That's great to know.
And we're in a great position to do it. Other school districts have been doing this. The nice thing about it, I think, is just the keeping the calendar clean. Most importantly, though, is providing instruction in a means that our kids are very well-prepared for. We thought about, you know, we have built into our calendar at least three days at the elementary, many for the, three days at the secondary, many at the elementary, and we decided rather than saying, okay, we have our three snow days and then we'll try this- And we decided, rather than saying, "Okay, we have our three snow days, and then we'll try this," why not just jump into it right away? I mean, if we're really about wanting to keep instruction going for students, the first snow day, we would be doing our e-learning day.
So as was mentioned at the committee meeting, I think it's really important that the students are aware of this, but also really important that the parents are aware of it, that what it really means on those days, and given, you know, the explanation of what will be required and that. Because I think there are a lot of parents who might not understand this unless you absolutely give them the information. So I think both student and parents need to know. I'm sure the teachers will be aware and that, but I think that communication is really important.
And they're probably, we're probably going to encounter a few bumps and things, but if we start, if we have the first snow day and we jump right in, we're going to do, the communication piece is the most important. I'm very, very comfortable with the technology, but we also are going to have to have, make sure that we provide flexibility, because there's some families where the kids are home and need to care for other families.
Sure.
So we, as a district, need to make sure this is a really flexible program that is going to work for families.
I just want to echo Chris's comment, and we talked about this at length on the, at the committee meeting, that, and I'm going to look at Sarah, and hopefully I can catch her attention, that this really, we, as a district, in order to make this work, the first day when, you know, two-thirds of the students don't take their devices home, we'll be hearing about it. And so it's really important that there's preparation ahead of time, that this is how we're dealing with snow days. And I guess I'd suggest maybe a press release or something. I actually think this is a big deal, that we're changing how we deliver instructions. So, you know, I just want to see that there's, you know, between the two of you, that there's a lot of communication to our families. The students have to take their devices home, they have to log on, they have to, you know, do those steps. I don't need to tell you that.
No, but you're asking, probably communication to parents will be our biggest, the most work that we need to do, because as we've talked with staff about this idea, the majority of staff were very comfortable, felt like we can, that they could do that really easily. Get on, you know, in the morning, school's canceled, I'm going to post that activity for my class. We're very comfortable with our kids. They're amazing, they're very good with technology. It is going to be different for parents, and what the expectations are, and also making it really authentic, meaningful, and not overwhelming. We can't have teachers posting an assignment that's going to take two to three hours for one class. And so those are the kinds of things we'll need to help train our teachers. And it'll probably be a year where we don't have one snow day. But we'll be prepared for next year.
That'll be a good pilot.
In the event that power is lost, would they, would the students then have to make up a school day?
That's a great question, which I meant to reflect on. So if the, if school was canceled because there was power outages, when that communication goes out, it would not be an e-learning day. And we have that already built into our calendar, so that would be just fine. So it would be really, that communication piece is going to be, we know there's a snowstorm, school's canceled the night before, tomorrow's an e-learning day. Schools canceled that morning because there's no power, that's not real.
Not an e-learning.
You would just say, "It's not an e-learning day." Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
So, so I just want to make clear, I guess I want to have it clear, and I'd actually be frankly more comfortable if the motion made it very clear that this is seven to 12. Because right now, it doesn't say that. And I think it's really, really important that that is a big part of the message, that people are aware that that's what we're talking about. We're talking about seven to 12. We, at this point in time, are not talking about elementary. So that would, that's just one, for me, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle because there are clearly, in my mind, different considerations that we'd be talking about if we were talking about elementary versus talking about seven through 12, where we really are beginning to ramp up those expectations for our kids, that they are taking responsibility for their work, and that they are being responsible for communication and coordination with their staff. So that's, again, something we need to be really clear about. And I also, this makes me a little nervous. I mean, this is like, this is a big leap. And I know that the vast majority of our staff are probably very comfortable with this, but there are certain seven to 12 classes that lend themselves to really having this work incredibly well. And there are others where maybe there are going to be, like you said, some glitches or some difficulties. So I guess the other thing is, I think it would be great if we, even if it was part of the superintendent's report, but if we made sure come November, December, we're circling back with this. And probably at that point, we'll have a much better, administration will have a much better understanding of kind of what students and families are going to be looking at in terms of, again, what that would look like, if maybe that could be a priority for us as a board to make sure that's being communicated out from this level as well. But I think it's, I think it's great, I know there are several school districts in the state who did this last year, and it worked incredibly well, and they didn't have the issues with the calendar that we did. And so I really applaud staff for pulling all of this together.
I understand your concerns, they're all valid. Keep in mind, typically, schools don't make up the first two or three, depending on how the minutes shake out. So this is, this beats doing nothing for two and three days.
Yes.
And I think, over time, we're going to learn more. The other, currently, we make up time by adding days. We've, and this year was unusual, and I think we'll all agree with that, but we had to add minutes to days. You know, I'll argue that's just a waste of time. We're just, we're just doing what we have to, to meet the state mandate with the DPI minutes, because we have to. So we're trying to be proactive and do something different. Yes, it's out of the box, we'll learn as we move forward, but I think, over time, we'll be able to have better instruction on inclement weather days than we do by adding time at the end of the year, when we're getting nothing out of, where we're getting very little in terms of enthusiasm out of students.
Totally agree.
Trish, would you be willing to add?
Yeah, so I, I agree.
E-learning program for grade seven to 12?
Yeah, so I agree with Meg's motion, and would amend my mo, I mean, her comments, rather. I would amend my motion so that it reads, "Motion to approve an e-learning program to be utilized on days for seven to 12, grade seven to 12, when school is canceled for inclement weather or other emergencies." And Barb, you seconded that, you seconded it, right?
Sure. Did I?
You did. Yeah, I think you did.
Okay. Any discussion or questions?
Again, thank you. I know we talked a little bit about this at the end of last year, about how helpful this would be moving forward, and I really appreciate you pulling everything together.
All right, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Connie.
Thanks, Connie.
All right, we are moving into item 13, general, which is appointment of board member, but this is actually the process of appointing a board member. And so we are looking for the board to agree to move forward with both the process and the timing of the appointment of a new board member to fill the vacancy created by the resignation on August 5th, 2019, of Amy Daly. There is a proposed timeline that's been put together, which would be applications as of August 13th. We would make available that people could begin to apply. We would look at a deadline of August 29th. We would, we are then looking at a special board meeting on September 5th to conduct interviews and select the candidate. That is a committee meeting week. And then that, the candidate that would be selected at that meeting would be seated at the regular school board meeting. The process that we've used on the past couple appointments is that we have, once we've received the applications, once the deadline has passed, then we actually provide all applicants with, I think we've had three or four questions, that they then receive ahead of the interview, so that people can do their due diligence and do some thinking about what it is that we're asking them, so that people aren't, you know, I mean, we all know that it takes us at least a year to get up to speed with something like this. So for people to be able to really have that opportunity to think through things, we then have interviewed each candidate with respect to those questions. The questions that we've used in the past, I believe, did board members get a copy of those?
Should be attached?
And, and again, I'm putting this out here just for us to have conversation about it. The questions we've used in the past have been, you know, the, what is, what in your experience do you believe makes you the best candidate for the position? What are current issues, two or three current issues that you're seeing are going to face the school board over the next several years? We've asked if board, if people are intending on running for election at the actual April election, because this position will become vacant next April, and it will be for a full three-year term next April. The other question that we wound up asking, I believe, the last couple times, was if people were aware of any potential conflict that they might have serving on the board, whether something with respect to their employment might require them to recuse themselves from decisions, whether they might have a family member that's currently employed with the district. Those have been the four that we've used. So we just wanted to put it out to the board to see if people are still comfortable with that format, and if people are comfortable with that timeline.
I, go ahead, sorry.
I'm unavailable on the 5th, by the way, so I can't, I won't be attending that meeting.
Okay, so we might have to look at a different option. Are you gone the whole week, or?
No.
Okay.
I'm working that night.
The committee meetings are the night before, on Wednesday, the 4th, because of the holiday.
Okay. Are you here on the 4th?
Wednesday? I do believe I am.
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday's, Tuesday's the...
Tuesday's the 3rd.
3rd?
No, Thursday's the 5th, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Tuesday's the 4th.
We moved the committee meetings to the Wednesday, because Tuesday's the first day of school.
Right. Are people available Tuesday, the 3rd?
People are here.
Sure.
I'm not, I'm off at home.
Tuesday, the 3rd, I am available.
Okay. What about?
Yeah, and you've got the other committee meetings on the 4th, right?
What about Wednesday, the 4th?
That's the committee meetings.
Would people be available?
We could just start early.
We could start early.
You're not going to be here.
Well, Judy, Judy would have difficulty getting here early, too.
What's the 6th, is that?
That's a Friday?
I'm, that's fine. What's your, what are you saying?
Should we do a survey monkey tomorrow?
Yeah, let's do a survey monkey and see if we can come up with something that we have.
One other question I had about this, can the application be fillable when you put it online? So people can just type into it?
Oh, fillable online?
It is right now.
Oh, it is, okay.
You just have a PDF there, but it will be, yes.
So I, I'm here, it says candidate seated at regular school board meeting on September 12th. That's a Thursday.
Well, then that's probably not. Second, it's probably the 9th.
Board meetings.
Oh, it's the 9th.
Yes, that's a typo.
Actually, it's the 9th.
Good job, girl.
Well, I kept looking at it, and I was like, "I'm not in town." That's a Thursday.
Good catch. I'll just say, I like, this process is what we've used before. This is, this looks good. Should I make a motion?
How are the, how are the applications made available?
Last time, we got them via email.
Okay. Just wanted to check.
And then we got them ahead of time, right? So we could look them over before the interview night?
Yes, so board members will get them ahead of time, yes. The applications, yes.
Right.
Okay.
We'll send out a survey monkey tomorrow and come up with a date.
Okay, so...
It might be challenging to get a date, from what I'm hearing, however, by the night.
It does sound like it.
So we might have to, we'll schedule it as soon as we can, and it's important that you're all there.
Yeah.
We'll schedule it as soon as we can, and if it's going to have to be, you may have to have a special school board.
We may wind, we may wind up having to have a special school board meeting that second week in September, or later in that week.
I'll be gone September 11th through the 16th.
Yeah, and I'm all tied up that week of the 10th, or the 9th, I mean. I got Monday, but Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are unavailable.
Honestly?
Same here.
Do it Friday, Friday at 6:30.
Friday, I'm okay. Any Friday, Fridays are open.
So it just means we go to our fish fry a little late, you know?
I'm okay for a Friday.
I'm okay with the 6th.
Yeah, I'm okay with Friday, too.
So that would be the Friday before?
The 6th, that would be.
The 6th, Friday, the 6th.
Our candidate will have an entire weekend to study the package.
There you go.
Okay.
All right.
So we're changing it to the September 6th?
Let's, that's, is everybody available?
We don't know about Judy.
September, we will check with Judy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so could I have a motion to?
I will move to approve the proposed timeline and process to appoint a new board member. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Is that with the change date?
That would be with the change date, both with the 5th and then with the...
The 6th, you mean? Nine, 6th, special board meeting?
The 6th and the 9th, yes.
The 9th, right. So you got two corrections on there.
Yes. And then, then if, then if we would, if we'd be really organized, then we actually would look to have the new member come in on the 9th for an orientation prior to that first meeting.
Okay. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving into item B, Appointment of Board Treasurer. Barb?
I move that we appoint Mike Wade, Board Treasurer and Chair of Business Services, HR.
Second. I'm seconding that, yes. I've seen you lead the meeting, you've done a great job.
Okay, so you, you want to combine B and C?
I did.
Okay. And Trish seconded B and C.
B and C, yeah, that's right.
Okay. And Mike, are you okay with?
I am willing to serve as both.
And we are thrilled to have you.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with the motion with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving into item D, Revision of Policy Number 0155 Committees. This policy is in front of us. Because we combined committees, the policy previously indicated that Human Resources was comprised only of board members, but now that we have a combined Business Services, Human Resources Committee, there are committee members that will be serving on that committee, so we need to amend that language with respect to human resources.
The practical reality, you know, the, I think the concern when this policy was initially put in place was that if you went into closed session with respect to a specific personnel matter, you did not want to have citizen members serving on that committee. But the reality is, Chris, who's the historian, board historian at this point, can't remember a time that a committee ever went into closed session. And frankly, I can't, I can't envision any time that we would go into closed session with respect to a human, specific human resource matter without it being the full board. It would not be a committee matter, so, anyway. So that is the change that is being recommended with respect to 0155.
All right. So let's move to approve the policy 0155, changing the statement that committee, community committee members would not be allowed in the HR due to the fact that we have a business HR committee.
Yes, so we're deleting, we're just deleting the final stanza. So the recommendation would be to update the language to read, "A standing committee shall also consist of up to three," voting not... shall also consist of up to three voting non-school board members, including up to one high school student representative and up to two citizen members. So that would be the revised language. And it's generic, so that covers both business services, HR, and ed services, and frankly, any other standing committee that the board would choose to set up moving forward.
So I would move to approve that change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. Item E is adoption of policy 0155.1, community participation on board committees. When we went to ensure that we were correctly following the policy related to community participation on board committees, what we determined was that in our process this past, what, two-plus years where we were revising all of our policies, somehow that policy was never reviewed. And so, when we adopted all of the policies, it was not adopted as part of the new policies. So it's been basically out there in, in Neverland. And, you know, we can, we can argue that because we didn't actively take action with respect to it, it continues to be alive, or we can, or there's another position that we said when we adopted wholesale all of our policies, that was it, and so this policy was dropped. But the reality is that, that we, that I believe this is a policy that's really important that we have. But we wanted to bring it to the board, number one, because we believe that this shouldn't just be a process, this should be an actual board policy. But number two, we wanted the board to be able to take a look at it afresh, because we really never did that. And the previous policy allowed for committee members to be appointed to two-year terms, and then committee, and all of you should have it in front of you.
It's in your folder.
In your folder. So committee members could be appointed, would be appointed to a two-year term, and they would then have the ability, this is under, it's old 811.4, and it is D, standing and temporary or ad hoc committees' terms of service. The terms of citizen members would commence July 1 and end June 30. That was a recent change we made, so it would coincide with the school year. But it indicated that a citizen member could serve two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee. So they would be appointed, and that if they were appointed to that two-year term, they were able, if they wanted to, to say yes, they wanted to continue service, they would be able to apply for reappointment to that committee. Both Ed and Leslie did that. So they were both, no, Ed was new, but Leslie was on a committee in 2016, she served to 2018, she then was reappointed 2018 to 2020. Ed was also appointed 2018 to 2020. Our other existing committee member, Melissa, was appointed 2017 to 2019. Administration reached out to her this year under what we thought was the existing policy to, to determine if she had an interest in reappointment. She indicated at that point that she did. That's when we kind of went back and realized that, that this wasn't, literally wasn't in our policies. So this is in front of us tonight for two reasons. Number one, we need to adopt the policy, and then number two, we need to provide guidance to administration with respect to how we're going to go out and let the public know what vacancies we've, we have on our committees. So you're, so we're suggesting that they can serve two one-year terms? Well, they're, they're, it's a two-year term. It starts out as a two-year term. Where does it say?
Yeah, where does it say that? I was looking for that.
I don't think it does.
Matter of fact, actually, it says one, because July 1 to June 30 is one year.
That was the old one, you're right. Yeah. Yeah, this, this shows that you're gonna do two one-year terms.
Right.
Did you want to change that? Are people comfortable with that, moving forward?
Okay with it.
Doing a one-year term?
With the one year or the two-year?
Yeah, which? With a one-year. So.
Comfortable with one year?
Hmm?
I wouldn't have a problem, you know, continuing, or are you, are you suggesting that we go to two-year terms?
So I, I mean, I believe, I believe that, that the first year is typically a learning year. And although people come on committees and provide lots of value, they also have enhanced value in that second year if they're interested in, in doing that. So I guess we have an option. We can either appoint for a two-year term, or we can appoint for a one-year term and allow people the ability to seek reappointment for the second year.
If, if it's important that they be on for two years, then we should have a two-year term. And then maybe only have one term where they have to go to another committee. The reason I like the one year is it gives more people from the community opportunity to serve, to get involved with school district business. So I like that. And again, if, if that, sitting on that committee for two years is really important for them to be functional and to be a contributing member, then we should have a two-year term with one, one term only on a committee where they have to move. That would be kind of splitting the difference, basically. So again, if it's, and I think the importance of a one or a two-year term is debatable too, so. Mike, how long were you on business services before you were appointed?
I, I think just a few months, maybe four, five, six months.
I think that institutional knowledge of the people like Melissa, Jerry McInley, Ed Morgan-Roth, those folks have had, that institutional knowledge is really valuable. I guess I have a little bit of a concern, the one, I mean, I like the idea, you're right, I want more citizen members on our committees, but I like the idea of a two-year term, because the second year, I think they-
And what we could do, if there's two community members, then you stagger.
Right.
So there's, there's always one community member that's serving their second year.
I agree, I think the two-year makes, makes sense. The first year, really getting to understand a lot of the conversation in that. And if no one applies to that committee, if no community member applies, I mean, they can have the option, but we can request that they serve on a different committee and give other people, you know, the opportunity.
Are you envisioning, will the administration rewrite this and bring it back to us to vote on, or are we gonna make those changes in it right now? We're hoping to make it now, because we'd like to be able to then go out and, because we, we definitely, you know, Ed and Leslie are on until 2020. Melissa, again, indicated an interest in, in serving another term, which was under the old policy. And, but, but we definitely have one vacancy on business services, human resources, that we'd like to be able to get filled, but we really can't do that unless we have a policy. So the old policy did say two-year terms?
This is the old policy here.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
And it says one year.
There's another policy that talks about the citizen, the composition of committees under the old policies, they didn't print it here, and that is where the two-year term is delineated. There's two separate policies that, of the old policies.
At the end of D1, it could simply say, these will be two-year terms. Staggered? What? Staggered for the two committees? Yeah, but we can just probably do that by practice, but I think that's all that needs to be changed on here, I think otherwise it's fine.
Well, you'll have to change that, what are you saying, D, section D?
Yeah, D1. Section D1. Standing committees' terms of citizen members shall commence July 1 and end June 30th. Well, and last two years. And last, for a two-year term. Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. So then, the question then becomes, do we then want to delete two?
Two what?
Because two then would indicate a citizen member shall be eligible to serve two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee. And I think what I'm hearing is, we don't want to allow- Four years? For four years.
I, I think they should be able to apply again.
Right, yes, they should be able to apply again. Make it open. Right.
Right, I wouldn't have any problem with that.
If it's open, yeah.
Yeah, just leave it, leave two the way it is. Okay. I mean, what this says really is that you can't serve more than four years. That, that's what two really says. And I think we're all in agreement, you know?
It still needs to be approved by the board for the second term, right? It's not automatic, they just apply for it and then they get it? Or is it, does it have to come to the board for approval?
The committee chair. Committee chair reviews those, right? So the committee chair, I suppose, could say, well, I think we need more committee or community input, therefore denying that reappointment.
As a committee chair, do you want to make that decision?
So I think the big, so the big question is, after that two-year term, are we looking then to request applications from the broader community? But that committee member may also reapply and could be reappointed. Is that, that's what we're?
I think that's right.
Yes. So, do we have any revision other than D1? No.
Then- The second paragraph on the first page, is it, two, two voting non-board citizen members?
What, which, what letter are you looking at?
Understanding committees on page one, second paragraph.
It includes the three, but then it includes the high school students.
Didn't the policy, we just?
The same, it was three voting non-board citizen members, including one high school student.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the high school student's one, and then we have two community members, that's... Okay, so the, the clarification is that, that people will be appointed to a two-year term, they would be eligible to serve a second term, but we would be putting out vacancies for the community, and they would-
Just reapply.
Reapply if they wanted to serve for that second term, but they would be eligible to do so. Well, I'm gonna make one more suggestion. On that same paragraph that Mike's talking about, understanding committees? Mm-hmm. The third line, except the human resources committee, which is comprised of only board members, probably just strikes that whole line. Yes, that's actually, right, that's actually what- So just to put a period after the words, standing committees, that should just be a period then. So I think those are the only two changes, right?
Yeah, no, Sunny?
I do. Could we take out the, in D2, where it says appointment by the second Friday in May? In case the board decides to move that timeline, then they don't have to take it back to the whole board for approval. If you want to do that earlier, for example, or later, depending what's happening.
Right.
That kind of locks you in.
Yes. Okay. So there's three changes we're making altogether. So I will, I will move to approve, oh, sorry, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I will move to approve 811.4 with the three changes that we've identified in the second paragraph, and then D1 and D2. Second. Any discussion or questions with respect to those?
We can't use the same number for the new-
Right, we'll have to use, we'll have to use a- Yeah, sorry.
Is that okay?
Neola number. Yeah.
Okay.
So if you want me to add to my motion and renumber appropriately?
And renumber appropriately.
Yes. Okay. So, is everybody clear on, so two-year term, the person can apply for reappointment and could serve an additional two-year term if selected?
It'll be open to the-
And it'll be open, yes. Okay, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Motion carries. The final, again, and here it's really for clarification of administration, we have the two committee members who are serving till 2020, we have an existing committee member, Melissa, who was approached under what we thought was the existing policy and indicated an interest in reappointment. And so I need consensus with the board that you are comfortable with us doing so, reappointing her, and then we would be seeking committee members for a one-spot vacancy for our business services, human resources committee.
So we would be appointing her for one or a two-year term?
Well, one, I guess just one, because under here was just one year.
One year, and then we'd stagger, then it would stagger.
One year, and then it'll just stagger, yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep. Good with that, are we good with that?
I think so, I mean, if, if we asked, and I think we should honor what we believed was, you know, what we were doing in that, I wouldn't want to say, sorry, you're out.
Okay. All right. Moving into item G, which is referendum projects update.
Okay, we have three weeks and school starts. We had a report out by our, by our administrators that buildings affected last week at our leadership meeting. Washington School is coming together, that's probably the one that we knew would be the most concerned, because it's a complete rebuild project within one summer. Ryan Arado felt pretty comfortable where we're at, so I'm, there'll be a few loose ends, you know, we're realizing that, but that's coming around quite well. Plover Whiting is on track for the schedule, now keep in mind, that schedule is going to go over the course of the school year into next summer. So we'll actually, Nexus is putting together a piece of communication that we'll be sharing with Sarin and I as it relates to those first days when, when parents drop off students, because it's gonna be a little bit difficult there. Keep in mind, it's always been a little difficult at Plover Whiting, so it probably will be an improvement until it actually gets completed. But that will be a building that'll get worked on throughout the course of the year, and of course, that'll be done in a way that will have very, very limited disruption to the, to the learning environment. Ben Franklin, that project, I believe, is finished as it relates to the first phase, the office improvement tied in with the, with the new secure entry. And of course, there's more work that'll be done in phase two in two more years. The other building was spashed and we broke ground outside, I believe, today, as it relates to that particular building, they'll be tearing down this week, they'll start tearing down the, the tunnel, and so that's gonna be a complicated diversion of students throughout the course of the year. Tunnel's not gonna be there, so they're gonna have to have an alternative route to get from the gymnasium area, you know, through the building and whatnot, but Nexus is working very well with the administration, as well as Don Keckton and our, our custodial crew as it relates to getting, not only getting the projects moving forward- as it relates to getting, not only getting the projects moving forward, but getting ready for the first day of school. And I met with Nexus today as it relates to our next projects for next summer. And Cory will be meeting with Nexus and their teams on Wednesday. And then Nexus reports out to the cabinet Wednesday afternoon relating to Roosevelt and Kennedy Elementary Schools. So lots going on, we're real pleased with the direction of the projects at this particular point in time. Without getting into the details of the financing, we are generally below projected budgets on our projects overall. There's a couple of projects that might be pushed a little bit, but generally, we are under budget. And I would say by a fair amount. So we're real pleased with the direction of our bids. If that continues, in two more years, we'll be able to step back and revisit some of the projects that got cut out of the project or the referendum last year. So, and of course, in the operations, we've dealt with that at the board level already as it relates to improvements to the teacher salary schedule, as well as special education, teaching assistance, and dental care for our teaching assistants. So lots going on as it relates to the referendum. The weather's been interesting, and of course, construction ties into the weather, so we'll see what the next couple of months bring.
I would love to go to some of the schools and see what's happening. But I also don't want to get in the way, and I don't want to take up anybody's time. And I'm wondering if, I guess I'll just plant this as a seed, would you think about a way that maybe two or three of us could, you know, get a half an hour tour of Washington, or a half an hour tour of Plover Whiting? I'd really like to see how things are going. So think about that, and maybe get back to it.
Yeah, I'll send an email. I think it's going to be as simple as you guys communicating with one another and then contacting the principal.
Okay.
Ryan Crawford.
Yeah, yeah, you know, they'll all be interested in people, you know, there's all kinds of people walking through, and, you know, if you've been in those situations, it's a construction site.
If that's, I mean, I see, I go by Washington all the time. If that's okay, I would.
Just get ahold of Ryan right now. You know, knowing that, you know, there's going to be lots going on.
And Craig has a question. So with an example, Spash or the other schools, for the start of school, with any changes for parents, how are we sending out information beforehand? Just to advise them what they might have to do, what the students might have to do differently, or? You know, because the first day of school, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, the only specific conversation I had was with Nexus related to Plover Whiting. They recognize the concern of all the parents that drop off students, their kids today. It's.
A lot, yeah.
Buildings weren't typically designed for that. They're designed for dropping buses, you know, buses dropping off students. But yes, we will have specifically for Spash as well.
Yeah, because you, I mean, there's so many parents and kids, and, you know, they're going to be showing up to, wonderful chaos, but especially the first day.
Well, it's going to look like two buildings.
Yeah.
Two separate buildings, when you take the tunnel out, it's going to look different.
Well, they'll have a back-to-school night, too, that they work on that a little bit, with their parents.
Yeah, that'll be well communicated.
So it's been a really, really busy summer. I mean, summers are really, really busy.
It's been the busiest summer of my career.
To start, and then.
Just really, and in a positive way, it's just, there's just an awful lot going on.
And the storms, I mean, there were definitely, with some of our facilities, there were some significant impact.
Go in the men's restroom here. It floods, there's two feet of water above it.
Anyway, so personnel have been working long, hard hours all summer. Don Keck and his crew definitely particularly, so we should thank them for that. Trish did bring forward, saw in another community a sign connected to the projects that made clear to the community that the projects that were being undertaken were being funded through the referendum. So there are some signs in progress right now. Sarah's put together something that provides our, kind of our logo vision, and also recognition to the community that these projects are being undertaken with the support of the community. So those will be going up as well in the not-too-distant future, so. Any other questions of Craig with respect to the referendum? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item I, which is Meeting Dates, Times, Locations, Future Agenda.
Strategic Plan Update.
Strategic Plan.
Oh, future, I'm sorry, future plan, Strategic Plan Update.
We are entering the third year of our five-year plan. Building principals and departments will be submitting their improvement plans to Central Office September 27. And then we will do a mid-year report to the board, as we did in January. And then, of course, similar to what we did at the end of the year. And then, of course, we'll do the end-of-the-year report, likely, like we did at a board retreat. But this is our third year, so at the end of next year, we'll be starting to plan and start thinking about the next cycle in terms of our strategic plan. Real pleased with the direction that that's been moving in and the work that's been accomplished tied directly into it.
It just seems like we did it yesterday, and we were thinking about it. And we thought, you know what, we're going to have to start on it next year, because it's going to take about a year to pull that whole project together again to make sure we're continuing to move forward, so. All right, great, thank you. All right, Meeting Dates, Times, Location. So we will be looking at a special board meeting on the 6th for the applications for the board opening. And then we will have our next regular school board meeting on September 9. I guess I need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, thank you.